Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Oberman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners for Hillsborough County. Today's date is September 8th, and we will begin the meeting by calling it to order and doing a roll call, please, as we have a virtual attendance.
Good morning, Chair Oberman.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you so very much. And first, we're going to have the pledge and invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. And as always, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces, that you'll guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I truly appreciate that. And with that, we have a wonderful opportunity to celebrate today. Commissioner Smith is offering us a special recognition. And with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a special pleasure for me to be able to give our annual recognition and proclamation to -- for Hispanic Heritage Month, because I feel like it honors my family as well that is Hispanic and honors my own Hispanic heritage that I share with our guests today. So would the following individuals please join me at the podium. Kramer Verde, State Director of the League of United Latin American Citizens, also known as LULAC; and Dr. Lydia Medrano, Florida District One, Director of LULAC; Lucas Martinez, lifetime LULAC member; and the other members of LULAC. Just come and join me at the podium for this special proclamation. It is a great pleasure to see you again, Mr. Martinez, in this boardroom. Hillsborough County is a treasure trove of diverse cultures, and the diversity of our county is our greatest strength. At the core of this is our vibrant Hispanic community. Hispanic Americans are a vital part of the fabric of our county, making up nearly 30% of our population. Their dynamic, multifaceted legacy helps strengthen our county's economy, education, cultural growth, and diversity. Since 1988, Hispanic Heritage Month has been recognized across the nation for 30 days every year, especially here in Hillsborough County. I am pleased to present this proclamation, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, which I will read into the record, and the text will display as I read it. It reads, "Whereas, one of the greatest treasures of the United States is the diversity of its people, and Hispanic Americans are an integral part of the nation. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, over 62 million Hispanic Americans live in the United States, the nation's largest minority ethnic group, with close to 6 million in Florida and over 440,000 in Hillsborough County, nearly 30% of the county's population. And whereas, Hillsborough County is host to a diverse Hispanic community with ties to Cuba, Colombia, Puerto Rico, Mexico, the Dominican Republic, Spain, Costa Rica, Venezuela, and other nations. And whereas, the vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of American life and culture, including the arts, sciences, business world, academia, the U.S. Armed Forces, athletics, and government, and... Whereas, Hispanic Americans' contributions enrich the country's heritage and help establish the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity, illustrating all that is best about the nation. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Week was commenced under President Lyndon Johnson in 1968 to pay tribute to Hispanic Americans and was broadened by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievements of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the numerous contributions of local Hispanic-American leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 15 through October 15, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to the nation, state, and Hillsborough County." And as we present this proclamation, which is kind of heavy, so that's why I was reading from my notes, as we present this to LULAC, the State Director of LULAC has informed us that they would like their lifetime LULAC member, Lucas Martinez, to speak for the organization on their behalf. So, Mr. Martinez, would you say a few words?
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Chair Oberman, distinguished commissioners, and friends. This definitely feels like a family reunion, and I can't stress how truly humbled and honored I am to be here this morning. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for the lovely invitation and for your leadership in the Hispanic community, and for recognizing today the many positive contributions of all the Hispanics that live or have lived in this amazing county. I'm here this morning as a LULAC lifetime member, and I'm joined by some extremely important individuals to our organization. As previously mentioned by Commissioner Smith, I'm here with Dr. Lydia Medrano, our Tampa Bay District Director, as well as immediate past National Vice President for the Southeast. We also have Davis Sinclair, who is our Florida Deputy State Director. We also have Delma Jodriguez, who is President of Council 7082, and Community Leader and LULAC Member Vic DeMaio as well. So, thank you so much for joining us today. LULAC is the nation's oldest and largest Hispanic civil rights organization, and for the past 93 years, we have worked to advance the economic condition, educational attainment, political influence, housing, health, and civil rights of the Hispanic population of the United States. Our founders formed our organization at a time in our nation's history when Hispanics faced unconscionable inequality and discrimination. As we talk about Hispanic heritage, it's important to know and routinely share this history, and LULAC's story is no different. Over our history, we've been successful at fighting for equal treatment as promised by our nation's founding documents. This year, we celebrated the 75-year anniversary of our legal victory of Mendez versus Westminster, which ended 100 years of segregated public schools in California. Among the amicus briefs filed in that case was one written by none other than Thurgood Marshall for the NAACP, who, five years later, used similar reasoning before the U.S. Supreme Court in Brown v. Board of Education. Later, in 1954, LULAC attorneys took the Hernandez v. Texas case to the U.S. Supreme Court, went in the right for Mexican-Americans to serve on juries. The Supreme Court issued a landmark unanimous ruling that, in a nutshell, secured that all racial groups in the United States have equal protection under the 14th Amendment. This decision, which, by the way, came out of mere two weeks before Brown, has and continues to have astronomical impacts throughout the nation, including here in Hillsborough County. In 1957, Council 60 in Houston, Texas piloted the Little School of the 400 Project, a preschool program dedicated to teaching 400 basic English words to Spanish-speaking preschool children to give them a head start when they reach public school. If Dr. Jay was here, she'd know where I'm going with this. LULAC worked to transform the Little School of the 400 to Project Head Start under the Lyndon B. Johnson administration, and that legacy continues in this building and throughout the county to the tune of $48 million annually, paid for through intergovernmental grants. I provide this brief history to showcase that, as a volunteer-based organization, our membership has worked to empower Hispanic Americans and build strong communities for all. But our legacy drives us forward, and we continue to make positive impacts here in Hillsborough County. We advocate for issues such as migrant workers and their health and safety, for environmental justice, and for fair and reasonable public utility rates, and so much more. Earlier this year, we partnered with the Classroom Teachers Association, School Employees Federation, and Mi Familia Vota to change immigrant lives through AFT citizenship clinics. We're proud to be part of Hillsborough County, and on behalf of LULAC, we thank you again for this amazing opportunity to accept this proclamation. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. Did someone else want to say a few words?
No, I think if you want to present.
Yes, yes. So, I thought you were indicating somebody wanted to... So, here's our proclamation, and thank you all so much for all that you do to help Hispanics in our community. It's very important work. And we'll take a few photos back here at the dais. That's what you said. I also wanted to say thank you all for being here, and thank you, Commissioner Smith, for celebrating this really important day. I have had the pleasure, and as you can see, Hillsborough County has had a great asset, not only working at Hillsborough County for a while. I unfortunately lost Mr. Martinez Jr. to LULAC and had the honor and privilege and celebratory experience of working with such amazing professional in our industry, that we are not only well-represented locally but also nationally through your efforts in making a big difference for the Hispanic community. And I'm so thankful and so honored and excited about seeing you here today, so thank you. Thank you all for being here and keeping Hillsborough the best county in the state of Florida, and as far as I'm concerned, nation, the most wonderful place in the world to As we proceed, we'll have an opportunity to hear any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a few revisions or corrections to the agenda. The first is Item A31. This is to authorize staff to schedule and advertise a public hearing on September 21st, 2022, to solicit public input and discuss modifying the approval of list of projects for Phase IV of the Community Investment Tax. This request initiates a process to set a public hearing to consider 10 new projects to the Community Investment Tax Phase IV list of projects, which includes fire services, two projects; government facilities, two projects; and parks projects, six projects. It does eliminate the project of acquisition of new vehicles for the Sheriff's Office in that list of 10 projects. Item D2 is to 10 o'clock, time certain, is to conduct the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and SM Ruskin Development, to be executed subsequent to the execution of Hillsborough County Document Number 22-0591 Development Agreement, providing for the improvement of a Westlake Drive to satisfy school concurrency. Item D3 at 10 o'clock is to conduct the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and EPG Ruskin, LLC, to be executed subsequent to the execution of Hillsborough County Document Number 22-0591 Development Agreement, providing for the improvement of a Westlake Drive to satisfy school concurrency. Item G4 at 10 o'clock, time certain, to conduct a second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Spencer Farms, Inc., to be executed subsequent to the execution of Hillsborough County Document Number 22-0591 Development Agreement, providing for the improvement of Westlake Drive to satisfy school concurrency. 10 o'clock, Item G1 is to hold a public hearing and approve the fiscal year 2023 HART Capital Improvement Program list of projects funded by transportation impact fees, and to earmark up to $228,371.40 in transportation impact fees for the HART Capital Improvement Program. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct the second of required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and SM Ruskin Development, to be executed subsequent to the execution of Hillsborough County Document Number 22-0591 Development Agreement, providing for the improvement of Westlake Drive to satisfy school concurrency. Item D3, 10 o'clock, time certain, conduct the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and EPG Ruskin, LLC, to be executed subsequent to the execution of Hillsborough County Document Number 22-0591 Development Agreement, providing for the improvement of Westlake Drive to satisfy school concurrency. And Item G4, 10 o'clock, conduct the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Spencer Farms, Inc., to be executed subsequent to the execution of Hillsborough County Document Number 22-0591 Development Agreement, providing for the improvement of Westlake Drive to satisfy school concurrency. Item E1 at 10:15 is to receive a presentation by the Florida Department of Transportation, District Seven, and the Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission regarding construction on I-275 and air pollution concerns. 11:45 recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move of approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Campus, second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Oberman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. We are at a point where we're at public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens regarding any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of the providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time, that when you address the Board, that comments not be directed personally against a Commissioner or a staff member, but rather at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public, and the Board is set aside 45 minutes in the morning immediately prior to the... Following the changes of the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comment in the event that not everyone has had an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment form found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open to the public. Sign up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, and an option is available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. You also may sign up in person at the day of the meeting in the lobby of the Frederick B. Carl County Center located at 601 East Kennedy Boulevard in downtown Tampa. Assistants will be available on-site between 8:30 and 9:00 a.m. And for participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online form, an audio call-in number will be provided to you after the form is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, and telephone number on the online form. This information is requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person public speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comments close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. The Chair will call on the speakers in the name in which the order was received to speak. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis, and boardroom seating capacity is 85 visitors for special recognitions, public comment, and viewing. If capacity is met, overflow will be accommodated on the first-floor multipurpose room, when that is available. Face coverings are also strongly recommended in the boardroom, although they're not required. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are set aside for each speaker to participate in our public comment section. The first speaker signed up to speak, who has signed up in person, is Mr. Shawn Wilson, speaking on Item A18. Mr. Wilson, please join us. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and in honor of the proclamation that we just heard, quisiera darle las gracias al comisionado por tanto apoyo que han aportado a los proyectos de Blue Sky en el pasado. I want to thank the Board for all the support that you've provided for all of the Blue Sky affordable housing developments in the past. So, I am here today for a couple of reasons. Number one, yes, I'm in support... By the way, Blue Sky Communities, 5300 West Cypress Street. Shawn Wilson, President. I'm here to support Item A18. This is an item where you are purchasing property that you are then going to rezone and then use it for affordable housing. It's in the unincorporated area. It is in the university area, and it looks like you're using HOPE funds for that. That's great. I applaud the county's foresight in acquiring land, and you have been able to successfully put those properties out in an RFP process in the past and turn those properties into affordable housing. Affordable housing is very much needed in the university area, and in the staff write-up for this item, there was some support that you got when you did some initial community engagement, and that's great to be able to build on when you go through your rezoning. I'm sure that if you... When you reengage the community as part of that process with the cooperation of university area organizations and other stakeholders, that you will get support during that rezoning. You could also maybe use HB 1339, and that might be a good guinea pig for that new legislation. Lastly, I have several copies of a Hillsborough County impact statement that Blue Sky created showing the impact that we have made together through Blue Sky's affordable housing developments. I would like to hand those to the clerk, if possible, when I'm done. What you'll see there is that our properties are returning 27% to the county every year based on your total investment. 27%, and that's in the form of reduced housing costs to the residents. It's not financial return to the county. But if we count the community benefit, that's a pretty good rate of return, I think, and that's for... That's 504 resident families that we have right now at Blue Sky's apartment complexes. You'll also see some of the top employment sectors where our residents work. Those are retail, office professional, and healthcare, but we also have a sliver of the pie that work in government and education. And so, I think we probably have some Hillsborough County employees. We have some school district employees, and we're really happy to be able to provide housing for that group of folks as well. And I just really hope that you'll be proud when you see the impact statement, proud of what you guys have created together with the private sector. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I appreciate that. It's great hearing the realities of what we do every once in a while. With that, I'm going to, as he passes that out to the clerk to come to the various different Board members, I'll recognize our next speaker who's attending virtually. That's Sharon Calvert, who's speaking on A7 and E1.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Calvert. And regarding D1, the county has received numerous complaints regarding a potentially hostile work environment at HART. HART has been receiving record property tax revenues over the last number of years. However, it appears this latest HART appropriation is funded using county mobility impact fees collected in unincorporated Hillsborough to fund HART, whose services are predominantly in the city of Tampa. Before appropriating any more funds to HART, an independent financial audit of HART must be done, and an investigation should be launched into whether HART is operating in any type of hostile work environment. Additional capacity must be added to I-275 north of downtown. Any attempt to shut down expansion projects paid for with state and federal taxes taxpayers already pay must be stopped. The interstate is a strategic state-owned asset that serves as a major evacuation route in Tampa Bay, and cars that will be stuck in traffic on arterial roads and winding through neighborhood streets would cause a dangerous and a safety hazard situation. The county is handing a huge 28% raise to firefighters in Hillsborough County. CIT tax funds are being spent on museums and parks. This is being done at a time of highest inflation and for years, real wages are in decline, and many are financially struggling. However, these actions confirm the county has existing revenue streams, including booming property tax revenues, to fund the county's transportation needs. Without the massive proposed tax hike referendum on the November ballot, which currently has a legal challenge and may be another transit tax referendum with potential legal issues, the county must stop holding the proper funding of roads hostage to massive transit tax hikes. The CCNA procurement process was never intended to be used for campaigns. The county awarded $700,000 to HNTB in May for HNTB to launch a campaign regarding that massive $20 to $23 billion transit tax on the November ballot. The county must provide an update directly to the public and the commissioners regarding HNTB's campaign, where the money is being spent, what the status of this campaign is, because the public deserves to know what specifically that $700,000 related to the tax hike referendum on the ballot. The public deserves to know where that money has been spent. So, I ask that the county provide that update in a public forum to both the public and the county commissioners. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sarah Combs, who's attending virtually, speaking on A18. Is Ms. Combs available? Okay, well, we'll move on to the other general comments until we can...
[inaudible]
Okay. Does that mean for all the virtual presenters or just Ms. Combs? It is for all the virtials? Okay. Then, yeah. Does that include Commissioner Hagan as well?
Our next speaker is attending virtually. That's Sharon Calvert, who's speaking on A7 and E1.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Calvert.
Okay, we already heard Ms. Calvert. Okay, we already heard Ms. Calvert. We can come back to Ms. Combs once the virtual speakers are able to be reconnected. The next in-person person scheduled to speak is actually speaking during the public hearing. It doesn't look like I have anyone else speaking on anything other than public hearings. So, are we close?
My understanding is that people are not hearing anything, so we may need to take a quick recess and see what's happening.
Okay. All right, let's give about a three to five-minute recess for a moment and allow communications to problem-solve. Are they all ready? Perfect. All we have to do is call it, and then everybody shows up. That's awesome. Thank you so much. So, is Ms. Combs available to speak on A18?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. You're recognized, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you, and good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak virtually. My name is Sarah Combs, and I'm the CEO of the University Area CDC at 14013 North 22nd Street, and I'm speaking in support of agenda item A18, the acquisition of 3.67 acres of land at 12701 North Florida Avenue in the university-area community with the intention to build attainable housing. As you are all aware, we have an insurmountable deficit of attainable housing units for the families in the university area, and the acquisition of this land will allow for more housing to be built for our low-income population, a population that you all know is very difficult to house due to the cost of rising construction. The University Area CDC has been doing a lot of work in attainable housing, and one of the developments that we're working on with Blue Sky Communities will be opening. It's called Uptown Sky on 12th and Fletcher in the next couple months, and that is on in the university area, which is an attainable housing tax credit development for the very low-income, which was made possible by leveraging Hillsborough County's full trust fund dollars in order to make the development of 61 units possible. We will also be putting programming and services in the bottom floor to meet residents where they are, and just wanted to formally comment that the University Area CDC is very interested in responding to this RFP when it is put out in order to continue to work with the community to respond to their request for more attainable housing in the university-area community. So, on behalf of the residents of the university-area community that have voiced their needs and their concerns, I just want to thank you for your consideration of investment in land that is specifically earmarked for housing, and we thank you for all that you have done for our community. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. I appreciate that. The next speaker is Willie Williams, who's signed up virtually to speak, and that there's not an agenda item referenced in his presentation or questions or comments. Is Mr. Williams available?
Hi, my name is Willie. Yes, this is Mr. Williams. All right, good morning. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I don't necessarily have an agenda item, but an item of awareness. I reside in the Bealeville community in East Hillsborough County in Plant City, and I wanted to talk about the recreation center out there and how it's been utilized, if there could be a possibility of getting like a youth program started out there. I know I have children of my own. My neighbors have children, and I know there's a need for it in the community, and I've spoke with other individual parents who will be willing to support and send their kids down to the park, you know, if there's a program available.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Bealeville is a beautiful community, and that community center is a great resource. We will look into that. Thank you for coming and asking that question today. With that, that's the end of our public speakers and general topics prior to the public hearings, and we will close the public comment section for this morning and move on to the consent Do you have a motion to approve the consent?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We have some time before our 10 o'clock public hearings, so we can move on to the regular agenda. First item is item B1. This is to approve an American Rescue Plan funding agreement for the acquisition and rehabilitation of 96-unit multifamily rental property, and Ms. Cheryl Howell will present this item.
Good morning, Ms. Howell.
Good morning. Good morning. I apologize. Just trying to toggle back and forth here. My name is Cheryl Howell, and I am the Equity and Community Impact Assistant County Administrator and also serving as the Affordable Housing Director. Item B1, I am extremely excited about this item. We have worked diligently with the Board of County -- with the CDC on this particular item. I am trying to pull up this agenda item. I do apologize. I have the wrong agenda in front of me.
So, we're having all kinds of gremlins today.
Some days, technology is not our friend, but we'll get through it. We'll get through it. This is a terrific project. I'm looking forward to seeing what she's able to share with us.
Cheryl, it's okay if you just want to summarize the 96 units?
Yes. Thank you so much, Bonnie. I appreciate that. This is a 96-unit apartment complex. We worked with the Community Development Corporation of Tampa on this project for a while to bring it into fruition. This is a means for us to be able to preserve existing properties so that families will not be displaced. We're working very, very hard in the community to ensure that our families are stabilized, utilizing the American Rescue Plans to do so. Previously, there was a set aside of $24 million, and these funds are a portion of the $24 million. The first of the first set of properties to be purchased -- no, actually, it's the second set of properties to be purchased under the ARP funds, and we are slated to do one more large purchase under the ARP funds, and it's 96 units. And so, we're requesting your approval of the acquisition and rehab of these units.
Thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciate the Board's support for the $24 million that we put forward towards creating units. I love the idea of actually being able to restore and rehabilitate 96 multifamily units in order to be able to create additional housing for our folks, especially in the 80% AMI range. And with that, I don't -- Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I just wanted to tell Ms. Howell that it makes me smile, and I know we're all very happy to hear her introduce herself for the first time, I think, as the Assistant County Administrator for Equity and Community Impact, and we are wishing you well in that new position. But I heard a motion to approve, and I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I'd also -- well, great to see you in this, Ms. Howell, but as well, I'd just like to point out, I always think it's important to hit that sweet spot, 80% of AMI, and I consider that actually, pretty much for me, necessity if I'm going to actually think about it being affordable housing. But this is excellent. The report this morning was excellent to get from Shawn Wilson. I just think we're doing an incredible job in providing affordable housing. Housing has not been our problem. We are deluged with people building units in one of the fastest-growing places in the nation. Affordable housing is a problem for us and every place, and it's really -- we've really got to look at it at 80% below, at a top 100%, which, you know, I just -- I'm not even sure I feel very comfortable with that, but 80% or below, and that's the kind of thing that Mr. Wilson builds his whole units, 80% or below, and so I'm really happy to see this and to focus on that.
Excellent. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I just wanted to chime in and, again, congratulate Ms. Howell, and also just mention that, you know, we talk about affordable housing a lot, and it is projects like this, 96 units. We're going to do another one later in the agenda that goes to single-family housing. When you start adding these things up and you start putting building block on building block on building block and really chipping away at the problem in different areas of the county and different neighborhoods, that's where you're really going to see progress. And this is exactly what we need to be doing to keep moving the ball. It's not going to happen in one fell swoop. It's going to happen in incremental projects exactly like this one.
Thank you. And I'd like to make sure that we recognize this really critically important point. We heard from Mr. Wilson earlier today, the types of individuals that are benefited by investing in what is termed affordable housing, when in all reality, what we're doing is providing housing for the workforce that lives in Hillsborough County. The individuals that move into our affordable housing communities are those that work in our businesses all around Hillsborough County, that make an 80% or lower level of income, and in some cases, 100% to 120%, but the average range of the work, of the income of the individuals that are provided an opportunity to live close to where they work is made possible due to affordable housing and the investment in our infrastructure that allows for folks to live and work and play inside of Hillsborough County. So, I am thrilled that we're able to actually make this happen, and we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith, and seeing no further comment, we'll ask for a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes, 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 and yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Terrific. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And the next item is item B2, and this is working with our Housing Finance Authority for a single-family mortgage program, and Mary Helen Ferris from the county attorney's office will present this item, and Ms. Howell is available for this with any -- for any questions as well.
Excellent. Ms. Ferris, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am very happy to present this to the Board. This item is asking the Board to adopt a resolution approving a plan of financing for the Housing Finance Authority for mortgage revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $200 million. These bonds would finance the purchase of approximately 100 homes, 1,000 homes, I mean, and it also wanted to highlight the incredible partnership between the county and the HFA for benefiting families buying their first home. So, this is a good news item. We have a great -- the HFA has a great relationship with the county, with Cheryl Howell's group, and we work very well together, and so this is a very good news item. I've just asked for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Howell, would you like to add anything to this?
Yes. Essentially, what this item does, it allows each family participating in this program a $2,000 tax credit benefit for up to 16 to 20 years on their mortgage until their taxes is reduced down. It's a huge impact for the family. It is absolutely money in their pockets to help create more affordable living.
Thank you very much. I think it's critically important we recognize there's a variety of programs to help first-time homebuyers purchase homes in Hillsborough County. Some of them are down payment assistance made available non-locally, not only locally, but also at the state level through -- for our first responders and as well as other important employer base that are interested in becoming homeowners. And given we have a relatively high rate of renters in Hillsborough County, every opportunity for someone who lives in Hillsborough County to purchase their first home is a real win for all of us. And with that, so I will entertain a motion for approval.
Move for approval.
Move for approval. Second by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can now move on to your two board appointments. Ms. Finley is here to present these two for the Housing Finance Authority and the Human Relations Board.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Finley, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Your first board is the Housing Finance Authority. You have six applicants. Please choose one.
Number six.
Commissioner Smith?
Six.
Commissioner White?
Six.
Commissioner Cohen?
Six.
Commissioner Hagan?
Six.
Commissioner Myers?
Six.
And Commissioner Kemp.
Deborah Kaler is wonderful, so I'll say six.
Okay, so Deborah Kaler will be reappointed. Your next board is the Human Relations Board. Both of these applicants will actually be appointed. Mr. Bevel had applied to both boards, so I had to put them both on the regular agenda. So, Shawn Bevel and Ligia Benson will be appointed to the Human Relations Board.
We need a motion to ratify those appointments?
That's been the tradition, so if that's a motion, I'll second it.
Movement motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner White. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our next two items are Commissioner Myers' items, item F2 and F3, and if we can turn it over to Commissioner Myers to present those two items.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Thank you, Madam Chair. This board has four contracted employees who have provided stellar leadership to our county. Their commitments have sustained our county.
My apologies.
Commissioner Myers, we're on, actually, the --
F2.
F2.
F2?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm eager to get to that one, too, but we're going to cover F2 first.
Okay, F2. Okay, the county and the city working together on employment opportunities for ex-offenders will be a win-win for our county and city to have ex-offenders working in our society and contributing to our economy. Therefore, I move that agenda item F2 be approved as presented.
Thank you. You have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Any comments? I'd like to actually say thank you very much for bringing this forward. You know, we've heard that our sheriff is working with offenders coming out of the system and developing a step-down unit to allow those that are coming from incarceration to back to society after they've gone through a series of training and programs and support to help them be successful. The key is, is when they get out, they have to have an opportunity for employment. So, this program really does continue that process, and I'm very pleased to see that we're putting the puzzle pieces together to help people actually contribute to our community in a productive way, and I thank you very much for this work. Can you please take a roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kemp?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's important for whoever's questioning, because I had this question myself, is that we already banned the box in Hillsborough County where we don't have prior to their most job applications, and I'm thinking probably most job applications that people make in private places in the county, that there's a box that asks them whether they've ever been convicted, or sometimes whether they've ever been arrested, even if it's been an arrest that didn't result in a conviction or was dismissed. And we have banned the box here in Hillsborough County in the past, so that is not part -- And we have banned the box here in Hillsborough County in the past, so that is not part of, that is part of what we already do. And this is, just anything we can do to help people move forward in their lives is a good measure, so we can look at what is possible.
Thank you for those comments, and I think you are correct. We don't, we do ban the box in terms of employment at the county. But, you know, we just did board appointments, and the application does ask if you've been convicted of a felony or a misdemeanor, and yes, and then to explain. So there is a box still in our process. So I would suggest that maybe we bring that forward in the future, but with this, I'm very happy to see and support this measure. Thank you so very much. Roll call, please.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wise, and then Commissioner Myers.
And now on to Item F3, also Commissioner Myers' item.
Oops.
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Based on what you just said, I'll make a motion to ban the box on our applications for positions, boards, and councils, or, I don't know if there's any issue with that legally.
I'm not aware of any legal issue with that, no.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further discussion, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Your mic is not on, ma'am.
Thank you. This board has four contracted employees who have provided stellar leadership to our county. Their commitments have sustained our county during the COVID-19 pandemic. These four extremely valuable leaders are always looking for opportunities to keep employees' morale high, offering benefits incentives, and making sure our citizens receive quality county services. Therefore, I move that the board approve Agenda Item F3 as presented.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We have a motion by Commissioner Myers.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm certainly going to support the motion on the floor, but I think we should take this a step further and just take a look at everyone in our senior leadership ranks. I think it's important that we're able to, you know, both retain and recruit the top-notch individuals for our senior leadership positions. So I would ask Ms. Wise, if we were to do a compensation study for senior leadership positions, do we have an existing relationship with a consultant that could carry that on, or is that something we would need to go out to bid for?
I know that Ms. Martin, Ivy Martin, has done some of that work herself.
Okay.
But it's possible that she may need some additional assistance. I really can't speak for her.
Okay. I would just like to ask that at a future meeting, then, that you bring a recommendation to the board on conducting a compensation study for senior leadership positions and give the board a proposal as to how we might move forward with that.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Right, and I just want to point out that the action regarding Ms. Lorton, the Executive Director of the EPC, will also need to be ratified by the EPC Board when we meet in that configuration next week. So we'll just take that up probably on the consent agenda, but just pointing out that procedural move will need to take place.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I'm going to support the motion and second it, but I did, thinking about it, wonder whether or not there's a way to make it so that these cost of living adjustments that we give to all of our employees actually go to all of our employees, so we don't have to deal with this piecemeal in the future. It may be something that could be integrated into future contracts, or when we take up these issues next time, just to add this language, so that cost of living adjustments that go to everybody, indeed do go to everybody, with the exception, of course, of us.
Yeah, we don't count, so. Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner White?
Thank you very much, and I agree with what Commissioner Cohen said. I'm actually pivoting back to Commissioner Smith's comments. I know you're the chair of the EPC, but if it's okay with you, I would just like to ask Ms. Wise or Ms. Beck to coordinate with EPC staff to see to it that that gets placed on the EPC agenda.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. And piggybacking off of Commissioner Cohen, I did ask Ivy Martin yesterday, because everyone's contracts will be coming up, to make it inclusive into the contracts going forward. But it's something we'll have to vote for.
Excellent, excellent. And I, you know, there's been this year a significant amount of work to kind of readdress our compensation, in order to do everything we could to not only avoid losing individuals that are so priceless and precious in our operation, but also to be able to attract and retain the talent that we need to be able to provide quality services to the residents of Hillsborough County. Ms. Wise, can you give us a little bit of, a little bit of an update of some of the things that you've done in the last year to address that particular issue? Is that okay?
Sure. Of course, in 2021, we gave employees $1,500, but we've also made other improvements, these cost of living adjustments that you're mentioning, that we did just recently, both dollars, a 3% increase as well as $500. But more so than that, we were doing, making some changes on our health plan. So the increase in health costs, of course, have gone up, you know, nationwide, but the county has absorbed those costs on behalf of our employees, and we've done that for a few years now, so that they have not had that increase in costs. We've covered that for them. We've made changes to our tuition reimbursement program as well. We want to encourage people to improve their lives and improve their opportunities for advancement, and so we've changed that as well. And then in addition, there's other items we've looked at, specifically in various job classes. We are evaluating some pay ranges, and so we have noticed that both from the private sector and other governments, we've had to make some wholesale changes in pay ranges that have made a material difference. So that is an ongoing item, because we need to keep up with what is going on in the private sector as well as in other governments. So these are things that Ivy is looking at on an ongoing basis and is continuing to do so. So those are just a few of the items that we've addressed. We know that a retention of employees is important, that we know that turnover is very expensive, and we want to be able to hire the best and the brightest and to keep them here. We know that some people are getting, you know, pulled away because we really can't keep up entirely, but we want to do our best to attract and retain the best that we can. And we appreciate our employees so much that we want to recognize that.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that it was very clear, that this is an effort to try and also make sure that our top executives stay, obviously, and are compensated fairly. But we are working very hard to do everything we can to compensate our employees in a fair and equitable manner and in competitive manner as best we can. So, and that work is being done, so I wanted to make sure that that was disclosed as part of this item. With that, Commissioner Myers?
Yes. While we're talking about salary and for our four contracted employees, we also need to look at salaries for them, but not today. It'll be an item that's going to come up and be discussed in their contract. They're all the women, and we know women are underpaid. Just want to just throw that out there. So we have to look at that and make sure our valuable leaders are compensated equitable. Thank you.
I 100% agree. Thank you. With that, seeing no further comments from the board, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. And now that we've reached 10 o'clock, Ms. Wise?
Yes, and thank you all so much. Item D1, this is our first public hearing. This is to approve the fiscal year 2023 Heart Capital Improvement Program funded by transportation impact fees. Josh Bellotti will present this item.
Good morning, Mr. Bellotti. You're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. Josh Bellotti, Public Works. This is a public hearing to approve the FY '23 Heart Capital Improvement Program list of projects funded by transportation impact fees, anti-year mark up to $228,371.40 in transportation impact fees over the next five years, subject to actual collections. The impact fee ordinance allows for transportation impact fees to be utilized for eligible heart capital improvements through the interlocal agreement, which defines the process. As you know, since transportation impact fees are gradually being replaced by mobility fees, the actual amount of impact fees collected will depend on the number of projects still subject to them. The impact fees are not eligible for operating or maintenance expenses, but the types of eligible capital expenditures include bus transfer centers, bus stop improvements, park-and-ride facilities, and bus pullout days. The agenda backup includes Heart's impact fee justification report, a supporting documentation of compliance with eligibility. We'd happy to answer any questions you may have. This is a public hearing.
Thank you very much. We have one person that has signed up to speak on this Item D1. That is Ms. Sharon Calvert, who's attending virtually. Is she still on the line?
I already made a comment. Thank you.
With that, we will close the public hearing and entertain discussion from the board or a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Myers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item D2. This is a second of two required public hearings for school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement. Adam Gormly will take us through Items D2, 3, and D4.
Mr. Gormly, welcome. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Adam Gormly, Development Services Department. Item D2 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement amongst the county, SM Ruskin Development, and the School District of Hillsborough County. Purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the proposed Sherwood Phase 3C project. The project consists of 21 single-family detached units, and the agreement calls for a payment of $174,900 to construct two middle school student stations and three high school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. The student stations will be located at middle school V-V and high school U-U-U, located on West Lake Drive, south of 674 in Wy Mamma. We ask that this approval be subject to the agreement execution to be subsequent to the execution of Development Agreement 22-0591, 22-0591, providing for improvements to West Lake Drive. This is a public hearing. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I have one speaker signed up in person to speak on Item D2. That's Ms. Kami Corbett. Here, please join us.
Good morning, Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson. I'm representing the applicant on Items D2, 3, and 4, and I'm just here to answer any questions, and we are in agreement with the conditional approval this morning. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for joining us. What is, I will close the public hearing, seeing no one else spoke, and entertain a discussion and/or a motion.
Move for approval.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is D3. Adam Gormly will continue with this item.
Mr. Gormly?
Thank you. Adam Gormly, Development Services Department. Item D3 is a public hearing to consider the school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the county, EPG Ruskin LLC, and the school board of Hillsborough County. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the proposed Sherwood Phase 4C and Phases 5A through C project. The project consists of 173 single-family detached homes, and the agreement calls for a payment of $1,399,200 to construct 16 middle school student stations and 24 high school student stations to be constructed at high school U-U-U and middle school V-V, located on West Lake Drive, south of 674. The proposed agreement is to be executed subsequent to the execution of Development Agreement 22-0591, providing for improvements to West Lake Drive. This is a public hearing, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gormly. I, Ms. Corbett, no, okay. I don't see any questions for Ms. Corbett, so with that, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion or a discussion?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item D4, and Adam Gormly will present this item as well.
Mr. Gormly?
Thank you. Adam Gormly, Development Services. Item D4 is a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation development agreement amongst the county, Spencer Farms, Inc., and the School District of Hillsborough County. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the Sherwood Phase 4A and 4B projects. The project consists of 152 single-family detached dwellings, and the agreement calls for a payment of $1,262,186 to construct 14 middle school student stations and 22 high school student stations to be constructed at high school U-U-U and middle school V-V, located on West Lake Drive, south of 674 in Wy Mamma. The execution of this agreement is to be subsequent to the execution of Development Agreement 22-0591, providing for improvements to West Lake Drive. This is a public hearing, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I don't see any comment necessary by our participant in the public. With that, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion or discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further comment, please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Well, we did that in record time, to the point where we're not quite at 10:15. So, Ms. Wise.
Would you all like to waive your rules? I believe all the parties are here for item...
Move to waive the rules.
Second.
Okay. So, I have a motion to waive the rules by Commissioner Cohen. Do I have a second?
I made the motion. He seconded.
Oh, Kemp and then Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you. We'll hear E1.
Thank you. Item E1, this is a receiver presentation by the Florida Department of Transportation, District 7, and the Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission regarding construction on I-275 and air pollution concerns. Commissioners, you have heard about this item at various of your board meetings, and most recently Commissioner Cohen made a motion to bring it back to the board to be heard today when you were at your last land use meeting, I believe. So, I think with that, Commissioner Cohen, I believe, has a few words, and I believe you all do because it has impacted your various meetings.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
This got here because, as those that are members of the TPO recall, we were brought some concerns by the neighborhood directly contiguous to a lot of the work being done on I-275 about air quality, and we really weren't equipped to deal with it at the TPO. We took it to the Environmental Protection Commission, and I know they're working sort of concurrently and are going to report back on September 15th, but it seemed that all of us on the board wanted to hear directly from FDOT, and that here at the Board of County Commissioners was the most appropriate place to have that conversation. So, I want to just thank everybody for facilitating FDOT coming, and we appreciate your being here today.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Board. Mr. Cohen, you're exactly right. Our role here... I'm sorry. Reggie Sanford, EPC staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, you're exactly right. Our role here today as EPC staff was just to facilitate that presentation. We got in contact with FDOT staff. Mr. Kirk Bogan is here, along with his folks and contractors, and they're going to do that presentation. As EPC staff, we will give you a full report at the next EPC meeting, which is next Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Sanford, for being here. With that, we'll have a representative from the Florida Department of Transportation. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Thank you for this opportunity to present our findings of the Ms. Savage's sample that she took there at the site and to talk about our bridge demolition and dust control. My name is Kirk Bogan with the Florida Department of Transportation, an environmental management engineer for District 7. Secretary Glenn would love to have been here this morning, but he had a prior commitment that he could not get out of. And so, we are here to talk about, if you would put up our presentation. As we all know, this is the capacity improvement project on I-275 from I-4 to north of Hillsborough Avenue. And so, we have with us Christine Dobbins of Aptons. She's one of our car contractors, our contamination and asbestos remediation contractors that we use for our projects, and also Matt Lewis with Ozmatic. He's our CEI for this project, and they will come and give you a presentation on the findings and what we're doing there on that project to help with dust control.
Thank you. Just make sure that each of them introduce themselves as they approach the podium. Thank you. Welcome.
Christine Dobbins from Apton Environmental and Infrastructure. So, for this... If you do the next slide.
Next slide.
Sorry. This is the I-275 project layout, and the red areas appear to be the bridges. This is not my slide. Next slide. So, the FDOT had commissioned the contamination screening and evaluation reports as required by the NEPA. They were completed in September 2018 for this particular roadway project. For the SCIS is the supplemental environmental impact statement and the Type 2 categorical exclusion. The categorical exclusion was approved October 8, 2019. Type 2 was approved October 2019. The supplemental environmental impact statement was signed in September 2020, and these are required prior to roadway construction as required by NEPA and as part of the project development manual for FDOT. As was recommended in the contamination screening evaluation reports, Shaw Environmental, which was Apton years ago, we conducted a bridge coating sampling in 2011 along the bridges that had paint coatings, including Floro-Braska Avenue, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Hillsborough Avenue, Chelsea Street, Osborne Avenue, I believe, and Lake Avenue. These bridge coating sampling reports are specific to test the paint on the bridges for lead and other various metals, specifically for the purposes of removing the paint, if the roadway contractor needed to remove the paint, what to do with the disposal of the paint, would this paint be considered non-hazardous waste, or would it be considered hazardous waste and need special disposal? And if you go to the next slide. So, in all cases, for all of these bridges, the lead concentrations were below what would be considered hazardous waste. They are all non-hazardous bridge coatings. The... Where you see U's and the qualifiers under lead concentrations, those were undetected lead concentrations for the T-clip method, which is toxicity characteristic leaching And the ones that were detected were below what would be considered hazardous waste. So, none of the paint coatings on any of these bridges would be considered hazardous. If you could go to the next slide, please. And the CEI received the data from the public complainant in June of 2022, and we took a look at it at their request right there, two days later. The complainant had sampled some sediment of some kind. We don't know exactly how she sampled it, where exactly it was sampled from. Did she follow FDP sampling procedures? Did she commission an environmental professional to collect it? What she did have was a detection of lead of 18 milligrams per kilogram in the sediment that she did collect, which is far below the soil cleanup target level for residential direct exposure of 400 milligrams per kilogram. So, although her complaint was of lead dust in the air, she collected a sediment or a soil sample, and even the soil sample was below what would be residential direct exposure limits. We don't know of any air sample that was collected. So, it's kind of comparing apples to oranges as far as air dust monitoring versus soil. They don't apply to one another. So, thank you.
Thank you for your report. Is there someone else that wants to speak? Unless there's questions. Do you have questions? I'm sorry. Just a moment, please.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions about the acronyms. So, CEI, what is that?
The Construction Inspector, Engineering Inspector, which is him.
Okay. And the CE, categorical exclusions? What does that mean? Like, what's being excluded? From what?
That's a... The FDOT has categorical exclusions, and maybe you can speak better to this one, that for the NEPA regulations, they include studies on cultural, environmental, wetlands, wildlife, prior to the start of roadway construction. You have to perform these studies, archaeological, those sorts of things, to make sure that you're not causing a problem, that you're not running into a problem like an archaeological dig site or something like that.
So, then you categorically exclude archaeological issues or something?
Let me clarify that. In the NEPA National Environmental Policy Act, there are different levels of studies that we do. If we suspect that there will not be any adverse or impacts on the project, that is what we call a categorical exclusion. If we don't know if there will be impacts or not, adverse impacts, then we would do what we call environmental assessment. And if we know that there are environmental impacts, then we would do an environmental impact statement for those. And so, because of the nature of the project, it was a widening project, and it was all within the right of way. We didn't expect that there would be any adverse impacts. And that was borne out by the signing of the document.
And so, is that why it seems so focused on paint and no other kinds of contaminants?
No, we look at all contaminants, but her complaint was about lead, and so, that's why we concentrated on the lead.
Thank you.
I actually had a question related to that as well. In the NEPA process, I mean, part of the reason this is a concern for the people that are experiencing the impact of construction, of reconstruction of not only I-275 because of the many bridges, but all related to what will be coming when it comes to the downtown interchange improvements, is the fact that the proximity to the right of way of where people live, their air conditioners, their windows, their houses, their front porches, which is a community that is full of front porches, where people are actually in their yards, their children playing in the yards. All of that has a very high, very close proximity to the work that's being done. So, while we have heard that the complaint initially was about lead, in the NEPA report, were there any other contaminants that were considered as far as the impact to the residents of this type of construction for this particular project that was disclosed and addressed to the community prior to construction?
We didn't just sample for lead. We sampled for all eight rickrometals, which is a standard practice. So, none of those were a concern, and we focused on lead since that was the complaint.
So, silica wasn't a concern?
No. No. Silica is not something that you would typically sample for as a toxic compound. But we sampled for all eight rickrometals, including arsenic, cadmium, chromium, lead, silver, all eight rickrometals anyway.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up to Commissioner Smith's question because I want to make sure... This is really actually an excellent opportunity for us to understand exactly how these studies take place. So, when you talk about categorical exclusions, is what you're basically saying that, like, since this is a widening project, you know you're not going through a wetland, for example? So, you don't need to deal with what would normally say issues related to a wetland, but then there are other issues that might be a problem, and then there are other things that you can see are definitely going to be an issue? And so, you sort of divide it up into, in those three ways, excluding category number one?
Yeah, and I can say that we do the same amount of work on each of those. It's just that is the level that they're given according to the National Environmental Policy Act, and so, it's not just the physical environment, it's the human environment also that we consider on those.
So, you basically only study the things that are obviously going to be an issue and eliminate the others?
We study them all. We study them all, and if there's not a significant impact, then we don't have to go into much detail.
And you exclude it essentially? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I wanted to hear more about it specifically because of what Ms. Candace Savage brought to us, and I heard what she reported, at one time saying a million times more concentrations of toxic, you know, constituents than was legally allowed, or that would ever be permitted. And then, we heard from FDOT, and they said that the way that it was collected and how it was collected, that when we're just talking about that specific sample, was a problem. And I know that you had stated this wasn't collected by an environmental scientist, and it wasn't, you know... And I know that it was evaluated, what her report or what she had obtained, as well as an evaluation by FDOT. But, and there was a call for the EPC to come in because what we were looking for, I think, what I was looking for, was an independent evaluation, and that would include, for me, an independent collection, an independent look at this that was not her as not collecting it as an environmental scientist and sampling, but something that could be done there that wasn't reliant on the citizens, even if, I mean, I don't know, we were suggesting that perhaps FDOT could take responsibility for having a company in there, or maybe the EPC for having an environmental company in there to properly collect the samples and then evaluate them. So, I mean, that's question number one as we get to the particulars of what was reported to us. And I think, you know, I was... Mr. Hall from the FDOT spoke well to what their evaluation was of this, but we did really want something, I did, really want something independent of that, and it's not that either party was, you know, making up something, but that, you know, there was the statement made, I think it was well put by Commissioner Cohen, "Trust but verify." So, to have a independent collection and report as to what's going on, what we needed to have that done, that's number one. Number two, what I think people are also referring to, what I've brought up over and over again over the years, is, as I understand it, and this is, I think, something probably more for the EPC when we get to that meeting, it's kind of confusing how this and where this travels, but as I understand it, Hillsborough County has... It's improved, but some of the worst air quality in the state of Florida. The most reported days, higher ozone levels. And when I saw mapping before, and I tried to look for this the other night, I can't find where I saw this, but I know it's been reported through these meetings, and I saw a map that the interstate had looked like practically it had a tunnel over it of bad air going from I-275 down across I-275 from Fowler to the interchange in downtown, from the interchange or north of downtown, from the interchange across to West Shore, where we have the worst air quality in the county, generated in huge part by traffic. So, now they're widening to bring in, to accommodate more cars and traffic, and I know the reports, the evaluations keep saying, "Well, this is not going to be a problem because even though we bring more cars and traffic in here, the cars are going to be moving more quickly," and so, therefore, they won't have, bring as much pollution with them. That's the retort, the explanation that we've had, which is generally an explanation, I guess, across the country that's kind of boilerplate about how you explain why widening and bringing more cars to an already polluted area will somehow make the pollution better, even though within four years, 90%, the traffic has increased 90% to the congestion of 90% of what it was before, within four years. So, that being said, I then looked at how they... I was looking at how they collect on a regular basis, not for this particular lead, but just poor air quality. And again, the only reason I bring this up is because we're kind of, I felt like I was hearing traveling between the two concepts. And so, I was trying to understand, it looks like the EPC's collectors for air quality are... I was confused about it because I saw one with the worst air quality, and it had Hillsborough High School, and when I reported the worst air quality. Then it had Seminole Heights as another one, and it reported, like, very good air quality relative to Hillsborough High School. But I live in the heart of Seminole Heights, or I did for 30 years, in the heart of Seminole Heights and next to Hillsborough High School. So, I was very confused about these two reports that were not in tandem. But I also, you know, there's been watershed studies that have recently been done that have shown that the worst impacts for air quality are the cars on interstates that stress everyone that lives around the interstate. everyone that lives around the interstate between like a third of a mile and a mile out, and which would explain what I saw on that map, which was like a tunnel, a cloud that went over the interstate of bad air. And what we've seen in the watershed studies that have come forward, I saw since 2014, is that that bad air over interstates that are caused by interstates and collector roads that have lots of traffic and, you know, put lots of bad toxic things into the air, that they are, have been tied to asthma, childhood asthma, cardiovascular disease, and maybe even cancer and dementia, and that's all ongoing. And so on a regular basis, outside of this lead collection, which I would independently like verified and understood, I would also like to understand from the EPC, FDOT, whoever it is, I'm not sure, but if we can put these collectors, since it's one of our worst air problems, I understand that places like the factory out in East Tampa, that there's air collector around there because that has had these issues. But what I'd like to see, it looked to me when I looked at a map, that we didn't have much actually around the expressway, and I couldn't even understand how they were placed. And as I said, I didn't even understand the readings when I looked at it and saw the Hillsborough High and Seminole Heights indirect, you know, a huge difference between the two, and I didn't even understand what that meant. But I was kind of saving the bigger question for the EPC, but since we're bringing that up, I just threw this entire concept at you, and maybe you could address first, Ms. Savage's, what we might do about that. I don't know who addresses that or how. And second, in general, and I guess that's for the EPC, or if there's air monitoring done, the National Lung Association, I think, reports this all, but how we get those numbers, how it's done, and what we can do to really look at the impacts that the interstates are having on people that live around them and their health.
Thank you, Commissioners Kemp. I'm going to do a follow-up to clarify what the information that I need because I live right near Hillsborough High School, and I do recognize the difference between having a lot of tree area and living between the two bridges that are mentioned in this particular report. So I hear and listen and see the amount of particulate that hits the air as a due to construction. And that's why I was saying, you know, as FDOT works through making changes on an interstate that runs through an urban area through very close proximity to the right of way, there is an issue in whether or not the NEPA exclusions address the amount of air quality changes that occur as a consequence of concentration. So in the example and in the report that we've heard, it was a soil sample that was used to determine whether or not there was a contaminant that was available. As opposed to addressing what I believe has been the neighborhood's concern is the impact of air particulate in the area that would impact the people that live nearby. So I'm not seeing that while there is, EPC does have an air quality monitoring station on the other side of the interstate, south of the downtown interchange, that monitors a great deal of the air in that area. What I had asked in the EPC meeting, TPO meeting, and land use meeting, when we've had all these different conversations, you know, is at what point, when it's very clear that construction creates a significant amount of particulate, air particulate, that would impact a community in a highly dense area where an interstate is actually, you know, being reconstructed or doing a significant amount of work, you know, what is the process for evaluating whether or not that air particulate is impacting the residents in that area versus a soil sample? Because a soil sample is whatever landed, when it landed. What people are breathing is what occurs all the time. What flows into their windows and their air conditioning units and into their houses and onto their furniture, you know, and into their kids' backyard is what matters, in my opinion. So and we don't have right now, from what I gathered, a difference between what was there that is already determined to be hazardous by EPC and other regulatory agencies that an interstate does to a community when it comes to the impact of traffic that runs through a neighborhood and the health hazards associated with it, because that's been long established. But now we have, you know, insult on top of injury of additional impact. And that's part of the reason why I think there's been this concern, is that not only we're having to live with an interstate that causes health hazards in general, that's run through an urban core of a neighborhood historically, and it's there, we can't change that. And even to fix that would cause a significant amount of construction. So my question is, how and what is the process for determining whether air particulate matter that could be as a result of construction or reconstruction or modification that would create air particulate be monitored by FDOT when it's so close to residential communities? And I'm not seeing that we have a solution there yet, but I think that is what needs to happen, is we need to figure out how to best ensure that the people that live next to the interstate as a consequence of an interstate being built through their neighborhood, those houses were there before the interstate were, a majority of them were. A lot of them were lost. But a majority of the people that live there, you know, have lived there for long periods of time or have bought homes from their parents that were built there in the 1920s or earlier. My home was built in 1890. It was there long before the interstate. And I feel the impact of the air quality change based on what it was like before the pandemic and after the pandemic. The difference in the air quality was significant when suddenly the traffic mitigated on I-275 as a consequence of people staying home and working remotely. It was significant. And so what the neighborhood is recognizing is air quality changes when construction occurs. And so I'd be curious to find out what your solutions would be and how we would go about measuring the air quality of a particulate, not necessarily sediment that falls on the ground. It's the stuff that their neighbors, your neighbors are breathing that they're concerned about, in my opinion.
Yes, unfortunately, we do these testing before the project goes to construction to see if there are any contaminants that would cause any problems with the community. Fortunately, during construction, we do have dust that comes up during the construction as we construct. And Matt was going to cover some of the tactics that we're using to try to keep that dust down, to make sure that we are good neighbors with those that are adjacent to the interstate.
Excellent. Before I ask Matt to speak, would you please, Ms. Commissioner Myers, I'll recognize you.
Thank you. And my concerns is on the dust control. At the beginning of the project, where you are watering down the project to make sure that the dust, because that was a concern, during our TPO meeting of the dust.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Matt Lewis, Osmatic Engineering, consultant for FDOT on this project. I'm actually the senior project engineer for the construction management. So yes, we are watering, and part of the slides, I don't know if we can maybe bring that back up, I could go through some of our tactics on how we're doing that. I actually have a little background on why we're widening the bridges and how, so.
Here, Mike. Here, Mike. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Watering at the beginning of the project because that was a concern from the citizen that it wasn't a water, and dust was just going everywhere throughout the neighborhoods.
To my knowledge, they were. I have actually only been on the project since early June, but to my knowledge, they were, ma'am.
You may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Oh, there we go. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is a good one. So I put together just an illustration of how and why. So you heard earlier, we are widening the bridges at Floro-Brassica, Lake Chelsea, MLK, Osborne, and Hillsborough Avenue. And the schematic on the right side of the screen there shows how they go about doing this. They take the existing deck, bridge deck and driving surface, and they have a slight saw cut there with a wet saw to score the deck. And then they come along with chipping hammers or attachments to equipment to actually, to break it up further. And this is to get that overhang off so they can actually widen and set another beam to the outside there. Again, all of this is done over traffic, or excuse me, not over traffic, it's done over a detour traffic. And spraying water, to answer one of your questions, Commissioner Myers, is during this process, they spray water on the concrete during and before they chip it to help mitigate that dust control. Next slide, please. So the existing steel reinforcement, as you can see on this picture, is exposed at that point. This is something that is part of the engineering of the widening. They actually will then take this existing rebar and then straighten it with a bar and then tie that into the new reinforcement that gets placed once they have the beams and the deck in place to create the new driving surface. And that's a little red arrow there to kind of show what was going on with the reinforcement. Next slide, please. So again, this is actually not a new method of bridge demolition. This is something that I've actually had experience with over dozens of bridge widens in my career. It's something that's done throughout the state. All saw cutting is done with a wet saw, typically a 24-inch blade. It's a walk behind, and there's a hose attached to it that induces, allows the water to flow around the blade, not only to reduce heat, but again, to also help reduce the dust. For the concrete chipping, the contractor is using hoses during, water hoses during the chipping, and I've actually got several slides to show that. Next slide, please. Well, actually, let me talk about remain durations. The bridge demolition is scheduled to be done by the end of this month, September 2022. You can see the current schedule. We're currently at Lake Avenue. We've got about 1.5 weeks there. Hillsborough Avenue has about 1.5 weeks. There's a little bit over northbound, over Floro-Brassica Avenue left, two days. And then also, we have some at Osborne left to hit in a couple of weeks. And we're actually doing that from 6:00 to 8:00, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM, only because there's a citizen that lives nearby with an infant, and we wanted to make accommodations to try to hit a window of time that didn't upset traffic with the schools, obviously, with Hillsborough High nearby, but also to mess up her potential schedule with her child. Next slide, please. So these are some of the pictures we've taken. This one goes back to the week of July 25th. You can see the gentleman on the right has a water hose in his hand. You have the ram attachment on the excavator there to chip up the concrete. Next slide, please. This is also at Osborne. This is the same week, just a little bit further down the bridge. You can see they're continuing to spray. Next slide, please. This is at Chelsea, continuing, again, you can see the water hose there to help mitigate the dust. Next slide, please. And then this is one at night we had at Chelsea, same timeframe, late July, early August. You can see the gentleman with the water hose, and then obviously the ground is wet there. I think there's one more, maybe? Okay. This is at MLK. Again, same situation. All of the concrete, too, that you see that gets chipped away before they open the road to traffic, they collect this, and this is all hauled off site to the landfill as well. None of this is reused in construction or for anything to do on the site. Next slide, please. This is just one more set. Again, this is at MLK, late July, early August. It's kind of hard to see on the left, but you can see the gentleman standing there spraying a water hose, and then obviously to the right as well, while they use the small handheld chipping hammer. Next slide. Same situation. Really, most of these, they're just going to be continuing. This is at Floro-Brassica, second week of August. Next slide. And that was it.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have any other presentations that you wish to or items you'd like to address?
I don't believe so.
Board, are there questions? Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I do have one question about this that is not air quality related, but I've frequently been told that there's a lifespan for the bridges and roads. Where at some point, they need to be completely taken down and rebuilt. But so it was surprising to me that as this reconstruction was being done, that there was this construction done with the road kept intact, but rebuilt at the edges or extended. So do these roads have a lifespan? Are we adding these extensions onto roads that have a limited lifespan for the near future? How does that, how does that work?
I'll tell you what I know. I know that most bridges are designed for the 75 to 100-year lifespan. I don't know what these were designed for. I believe these were put in in the 70s. I'm not certain on that, but it is, you know, the reinforcing steel that's in there, it's been encapsulated in concrete for a very long time. It's typically in decent shape. I mean, that's something that our staff looks at. But again, this is a pretty widely used method to continue on with widens.
Can I add that we do evaluate the bridges and their lifespans before we begin the project? And you'll probably hear more about bridges that are over saltwater, over the bay, that have a shorter lifespan because of the corrosive environment, but bridges over land tend to last a lot longer than those bridges.
So it might have been built in the 70s and could last for 75 to 100 years.
I will say the DOT also has an inspection program that they do biannually on every bridge that's state maintained and state owned. We actually had them recently come through this project and provide, you know, feedback on that.
And maybe it's ground-level streets. I mean, I've heard that, you know, you can only repave them and repair them so much, and then at some point, you have to just totally redo the entire street. But maybe that isn't true with, you know, I think I have not understood this part of that. And so maybe you don't have to do that on these elevated expressways?
Eventually, maybe, yes, ma'am. But again, with the inspection cycle that they have and checking the condition, they have a bridge rating system, too, whether it's structurally deficient, things like that, that all comes into play. It's not really my expertise, so I don't want to go too far into that and misspeak, but just on the generalities of it, that's what I know.
And I guess I just have one more question. I still, I'd still like to understand, I see that you're watering down the dust and the mitigation. And so I guess the issue is that Ms. Savage collected these samples off the ground, and you've spoken to that as well. But I still wonder about having air samples collected during construction around the site and evaluated, and have them collected in what is considered an appropriate scientifically valid way. And I'm just wondering if there's any, I don't know if we can get that done. And I don't know if you can all speak to that, or if this commission does something like that, or the EPC, because I think that was the original intent. And so I'm, could you speak to that?
Good morning again. Reggie Sanford, EPC staff. Commissioner Kemp, we definitely heard you at the last meeting and this entire board. Excuse me, we walked away with a list of things that we plan on accomplishing and coming back to the EPC board meeting with next Thursday. We will be looking at ozone data. We will be looking at whether there's an ability on our part with the resources that we have to expand our monitoring network. We do currently have a, what we call a near-road site that's located directly alongside the interstate. I think you were probably referring to it, excuse me, in your earlier speech. Let's see what else. There are a number of things that you've mentioned today that we'll come back with. There are a number of things that you've mentioned today that we'll come back with a full report. The only additional thing that I heard today was collecting the sample. Now, if you recall, we said at last month's meeting that we were attempting to obtain a monitor, because currently, our monitors are located out at the lead plant. And so, we had ordered parts, and I was actually checking to see if all of that came through so we could start the monitoring near where the demolition is taking place. So, we'll come back and let you know, you know, how that turned out. We've evaluated the reports that we've received, and, you know, I don't want to necessarily take up this board's time, but we'll come back next Thursday and present all of that to you.
And thank you for that. And I also had stated, and I didn't know if EPC had the resources they needed to do what I or I think this board would like, and was willing to look at that also, in terms of providing more resources to EPC to appropriately be able to deal with these issues.
I do recall your comments, Commissioner, and we plan on coming back with a cost estimate for you at that presentation.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Commissioner Kemp, thank you very much, because you asked exactly what I was going to about next Thursday's presentation. And just to borrow something that Commissioner Smith says very often, this is why we have our own EPC, so that we are able to independently investigate, verify, and assess our own information. So, I think this is a really good, we got some information today from FDOT. Next week, we'll get it from the EPC. And between those two things, it sounds like we have a plan to find out what's going on and see if there's anything that we can do to make the situation more tolerable for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And this is one of the reasons why we brought it to the board. Given that 275 I-4 Downtown Interchange has, is part of our overall long-range transportation plan, part of our TIP project lists, part of many of the things that the TPO is evaluating for funding in partnership with the state funds that are available to address our highways. In those contracts, there is an agreement with state funds to actually make those changes. And typically, there is a negotiation with local governments to share the costs in the right-of-way or the maintenance later on down the road, but there oftentimes, it's state-funded project. Quality, air quality that impacts the local community needs to be covered, in my opinion, by FDOT, not by our EPC. But if EPC can provide you with the support that you need, that would be fine. But when it absolutely adversely impacts the community in order to be able to maintain the highway, or build a highway, or reconstruct a highway, that is a state-run road, I believe that it is the state's responsibility to do the appropriate protections of the community in which they are working. So, if we could get some information on what it would cost to do the air quality analysis to determine what that impact is for the community and bring that to EPC next week, I think that would be very productive. Commissioner Smith?
Just one last question while we have the benefit of FDOT here. When do you estimate this project will be finished?
The, Matt Lewis, Osmatic Engineering, the current contract time runs through the summer of 2025.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's why I asked the question, because this is not a tomorrow, it'll be done in six months kind of thing. This part of the interstate will be under construction for a very long period of time. So, the impact to the community will be a long-term solution. So, whatever the solution is for monitoring air quality for the impacts of those that live around it, needs a long-term solution. And that's one way I'd like to make sure that we work on trying to accomplish. Seeing no other comments, thank you very much for your report. I really appreciate it. And with that, well, just to receive the report, do we need a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please take a roll call vote.
Chairman Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan? Commissioner Hagan? Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Excellent, thank you very much. Ms. White?
Thank you. The next item, we can move on to our staff reports, and is item G1. This is to receive a report on the issue of mold in residential dwelling units in Hillsborough County. We have Joe Gross and Sheri Murphy from the county attorney's office, and others available as well. And Commissioner Overman, you had asked us to come back with this report.
Excellent, thank you very much. Board, I wanted to make sure that we had some clarity on what's possible, given that mold has created some challenges for many of our residents in multifamily and sometimes in single-family homes. And so, the staff has prepared a very nice report, thorough report of not only the issue, but also what are legal options and within the statute that we have, not only at the state level, but also considering what's available at the federal level. Mr. Gross, you're recognized.
Good morning. You'll recall at your June 2 meeting, you included a presentation on rental housing that prompted a discussion on safe housing standards in residential multifamily properties, including complaints related to interior mold. Consequently, the board directed staff to prepare a report, and we'd like to briefly highlight the results of that report. I'm going to share my screen. So, specifically, the request was to bring back a report addressing the best-case scenario for addressing situations when mold is reported within a residential dwelling unit that involves a landlord and a tenant. Looking at the landscape of regulations, the state's landlord-tenant law doesn't really address or specifically call out mold. The Department of Business and Professional Regulation, who does do some review and has regulatory authority over certain apartment-type scenarios, they only address mold as it's readily observable, typically as an exterior structural issue. The Department of Health plays the role of primarily education. They don't have any authority to test or inspect. When we looked at other jurisdictions, interior mold and its remediation is not specifically addressed in their code provisions. If they are addressed, they're generally for just the broader standard of keeping good, clean, and sanitary conditions. The good news is that the Hillsborough County Property Maintenance Code calls out specifically that the interiors of all buildings and facilities shall be kept free of any visible or otherwise demonstrative growth of mold or mildew. So, what is the enforcement process? Just to refresh everybody, so we get a complaint, we open a case, and a code enforcement officer is assigned to investigate. The tenant is contacted, and an appointment is scheduled to visit the unit. While the officer is present, they're looking for the readily observable organic growth. When available, the property manager and the maintenance staff are notified. And then, the same day, typically, a notice violation is requested and is issued in mail to the landlord. The case can escalate as necessary. We have, if it was an overly serious situation, the case can be fast-tracked. Typically, these cases are reviewed by the code board or the special magistrate, who can order remediation based on what the case presents. We also have, in certain scenarios, the ability to take something to county court via a notice to appear. The way citizens and tenants and residents get to us is generally either by contacting the customer service center by phone, or by submitting an online complaint. So, over the past couple of years, when we looked back through our database, we see that interior surface irregularities were cited about 1,200, over 1,250 times. Eighty-five of those, percent of those cases were resolved prior to having any kind of adjudication, so they didn't necessitate the need to go before the magistrate or the board. We meet by our code or exceed the other local regulations and those of the state. There are certain scenarios where consumer and veteran services, through their consumer protection department, can assist tenants. And then, our ongoing in-service training, as recently as September of last year, included a session for code enforcement officers on mold that was provided by the American Institute of Building Science. So, some future opportunities that are out there. One would be to, when we have a case that involves a HUD unit, to notify them. This is, I think, what came out, part of, I think, the impetus for this whole discussion on mold, had to do with some complexes within the city of Tampa. And we learned a lot going through that experience with Commissioner Overman as to the other agencies involved. The Housing Authority plays a role, and that was, that's another opportunity to reach out to them if it's a property in which they have clients. If a case starts to become necessary to escalate, we can notify our colleagues at the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. We can update the tenant's bill of rights to provide some mold resources. And in fact, preemptively, we have added a link to the tenant's bill of rights so that residents can access that information readily. We can continue to explore education and training for our staff. For example, the EPA has an online course in mold. And we can refer tenants to the Bay Area Legal Services if their case warrants it. Some of our outreach, we've, this is a press release that was put out in 2019, and has been put out again this week and shared on social media so that tenants can be aware of it. We've also, are placed on the right, you'll see a flyer that's now present on all heart buses, that gets riders' information on whether they live in the city of Tampa or the county, how to access the tenant's bill of rights using the QR codes. So, in conclusion, we do have an effective code that deals with mold and other growth. The complaints that are received are typically and routinely resolved quickly. And there are other options that are out there that could enhance what we're doing. So, I'm going to stop sharing the screen and take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. I will tell you, I've truly appreciated a lot of the work that you've done to help us get to this place, the significant amount of research that was done by our staff in order to be best prepared for answering questions of residents that were experiencing problems with their apartments, whether it be in privately-operated apartment complexes, or whether it was in HUD-related or HUD-contracted apartments. We found that there was a different, interesting maze to go through to discern who's on first in terms of responsibility. But we did see historically and consistently that there's a comment, and it's in our state statute, it's in a variety of different places, that suggests that additional interior service mold and mildew is generally considered to be a tenant responsibility, thus leaving it to the discretion of the tenant to exercise his or her rights under the law. And the state statute only really refers to mold as to the landlord's responsibilities when it's present on the outside of the building, exterior of the building only. But one of the things that I'm very aware of, either being a homeowner, or being a tenant, or otherwise, you know, if you get a leak in your wall, if you get a leak anywhere inside the structure of the building, where there's water that's accumulated or dripped as a consequence of an HVAC condensation, whether it's a leaky pipe, whether it's a pipe between the wall, older pipes that develop pinholes that suddenly turn into, you know, a sprinkler system inside your walls, any and all of that that occurs that actually, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, but I'm interested in hearing what legal says about it, you know, is the responsibility of the landlord of maintaining the structure, but becomes evident that it's in the tenant's, you know, space, and they're responsible for maintaining a clean mold-addressed situation. So, I'm not certain I can agree with the continual statements that it is generally considered the tenant's responsibility to address mold, because it isn't always the tenant. I would suggest that it's less likely that it's something the tenant did that created mold. They brought in a piece of furniture that's molding, and it jumped up on the ceiling? I mean, how does that happen? So, I appreciate that we've got some great language in our code that helps address mold. And I appreciate the recommendations to consider adding some language to help tenants understand what their options are as part of their tenant rights. But I also do think that we need to see where there's an opportunity to address the source of the mold and make sure that it's appropriately applied to the responsibility of that which it was created. We live in a dense, high-humid area, and that oftentimes, if you don't run your AC 24/7, can create high humidity that can allow mold to grow very, very quickly. A leak in an apartment underneath the sink that doesn't get addressed for two weeks before the landlord comes to fix it, if that's the landlord's responsibility according to the lease terms, can allow mold to not only grow not then, but also for long periods of time that would be difficult for a tenant to manage on their own. So, I appreciate the recommendations that we've heard from staff, and would like to ask that if not only the code enforcement, but also staff, look into ways that we could potentially address those recommendations for the changes that we heard today. Commissioner Myers, did you have some comment? No. So, with that, could you bring back at a future date some ways that we could follow the recommendations that Mr. Gross elaborated, and our options?
Yes, Commissioner. If you'd like to just give that direction today, though, for example, to include further notices in the tenant's bill of rights or that sort of thing, that could be accomplished at this time.
Okay. So, and I'm going, I'm trying to make sure I get to that page where all those recommendations were made. Just one second. Almost there. So, in the presentation, there was one, two, three, four, five, six items that referenced potential opportunities for considering changes. Each of those have an opportunity for improving the quality of the life for our residents. So, I'm going to ask the staff to bring back possible ways that we could address each one of those items, specifically, a process for notifying DPPR with the four of the cases that are escalated, a process for partnering with Tampa Housing Authority of Client Complaints, because HUD properties are excluded from DPPR for oversight and licensing. So, they are out there on their own, and if our code doesn't make a reference to it, it's not DPPR's responsibility for enforcing in that particular case, so that would fall back on Hillsborough County's code, as well as the city of Tampa. Making sure that HUD is notified of the, any violations that our code does, in fact, inspect. Make reference in our tenant's bill of rights that address mold and the resources, and how to go about the process of addressing mold inside of an interior of a unit. And then, I know we do good training right now with our code, so I'm not sure what other recommendations are going to follow under that, but if we could at least look at that when it comes to making sure our code enforcement folks, as well as the partnership that we have with organizations such as Bay Area Apartment Association, because they're the folks that actually manage the properties and are landlords, partnering with them and making sure that training is there. And I believe we have a great relationship with Bay Area Legal. And I believe we have a great relationship with Bay Area Legal, just to make sure that they're copied on that, to make sure they're aware of the resources or any adoption of any kind of policies or procedures that we would include in our ordinance at a future date. So with that, that's just a request at this point for a future item. There's not a huge hurry on this, because we are working on it on several properties right now, so we'll learn what we can do to be able to get those things addressed as that comes back to us in the future. Thank you very much for this work. I appreciate it. Ms. Weiss.
Thank you. The next item is item G2. This is to receive a report regarding the issue and sale of Delta 8 products in Hillsborough County. This is a follow-up to previous discussion as well. This was requested by Commissioner White.
Commissioner White.
Madam Chair, I believe this is coming by way of a staff report, so I'm inclined to allow staff to present to the board, and then I'll make comments afterwards.
This is Joe Gross as well, with Whitney Green from the county attorney's office.
Excellent. Thank you. You're recognized.
Thank you. And I would be remiss in not mentioning Christine's crew have been extremely helpful and invaluable in putting both of these reports together, Deborah Kirby, Cincy, and Shereen Murphy, and Whitney Green, everybody. So thank you so much for that. But this issue, Delta 8 came up originally, you were introduced to it back in March. In June, we brought some of the results that, when Consumer Protection and the county attorney's office and code enforcement did some legal research, and we did a field survey of about 120 establishments. So based on the direction we had in June, we have visited an additional 75 businesses. This time, many of them were smoke shops where we found that more than half were selling edible Delta 8 products but didn't have the required FTX hemp food permit. So those visits were worthwhile. We did include municipal enforcement personnel this go-around so that they could get some insight on the issue and what we were endeavoring. Regulatory compliance investigators distributed a nine-page FTX information packet during their interaction with the merchants. We put a copy of that in your report, so you can kind of see what that looks like. At the same time, we embarked on a public awareness campaign through media outlets. There's a copy of the news release in your report today, by the way. WTSP did some coverage, both television and online, so you might want to look at that. So to further enhance the community education piece, communications and digital media prepared a very helpful flyer. So that flyer is being used at expos, homeowner associations, crime watch meetings, anywhere where regulatory compliance or code enforcement officers or even animal control officers are attending, they're going to share that information. So throughout this process, we've continued to work with Ms. Snelling, who I think brought it to your original attention, and the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance. And I think it's important to acknowledge that we've not received any citizen complaints over the past couple of months, so it seems to be working. Do have some options going forward that I'd like to share real quickly. So we can continue our retailer outreach and the public awareness efforts. And as necessary, when we come across something that's not in keeping with state regulations, refer them to the Florida Department of Agriculture. Certainly respond promptly to any concerns that are reported to us. And we can track for changes in products, marketing, and the need for possible local regulation in areas not preempted, including consumer age and product display restrictions. This is a very dynamic part of the retail environment, so I think it's important we kind of keep our finger on the pulse of that. And finally, continue to monitor some of the state and federal regulation that's coming down the line on that. And that's something that the legal team is kind of tracking as well. So that is our update on Delta 8. I think I was muted. That's our update, and we're available for any questions.
Okay. Thought I heard that part. I was like, okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I once again want to thank a citizen who's been very involved in anti-drug activity, Ellen Snelling, for bringing this forward. I want to thank staff from both the county administrator office and the county attorney's office for all of their hard work on this. I know this is a complex issue. Both the federal government and the state government play significant regulatory roles. I know we're worried about things like potential preemption in upcoming legislative sessions or even from the federal level, so I'm content to see staff move forward with the five options that they've presented to the board today. I will say to staff, though, that if we begin to get reports of these falling into the hands of minors, that you bring a recommendation to the board that we enact regulatory controls and that we stand prepared to defend those actions as we see fit. But it's important that we're prepared to protect the kids in our community if needed. So my motion will be to receive the report, to direct staff to move forward with all five of the options that they've presented to the county commission today, and if needed, at some future time, if we're getting reports of these falling into the hands of kids, that they bring a recommended regulatory framework to the county commission.
Excellent. Second. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen and Smith. I don't see any other comments in the queue, but I totally agree. You know, oftentimes, not having something to give to a business owner to help them understand what the rules are is, having that information that they've put together is really, I think, very helpful. I think wisdom is helpful, knowledge is helpful, and in an effort to protect our children, it's the right thing to do. So thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. And with that, we'll do a roll call.
Chair Overman.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp. Was that a yes, Commissioner Hagan?
Yep.
Thank you. Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Weiss.
Thank you. Our final staff report is to receive a report regarding an update on the 2008 Greater Palm River Community Plan. This is item G3. That was a future item by Commissioner Myers.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Myers?
I may comment after staff present the report. Thank you.
And John Patrick and Jay Collins, Jay Collins is with the Planning Commission, will present this item.
Welcome. Yeah, thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. My name is John Patrick, and I'm with the Hillsborough County Planning and Communications and Infrastructure Planning Department. I am here with--
Excuse me.
Okay. We're good. Okay. Here, go ahead. We were getting to see all of your talking points in closed caption, so thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm here with Jay Collins with the Planning Commission, here with me, and he will go over how we update the community plan itself. Before I hand it over to Jay Collins from the Planning Commission to talk about the process of updating the community plan, I would like to take this opportunity to give you an update on what we have been doing with the community plan itself. As you know, Commissioners, the community plan was adopted back in 2008 as part of the livable communities element of the comprehensive plan. And when it was adopted, the population of the Greater Palm River area was about 22,000 people. And now it is about 28,000 people. Just to give a comparison, it is the size of Temple Terrace, City of Temple Terrace, actually, 28,000 people. And the employment has grown significantly. It has grown from 14,000 to 21,000, and that's about 47% increase in this last decade. The graphic that is shown is on the left-hand, on the right-hand side on the screen is the illustrative map that has been adopted as part of the community plan, which actually shows what the community was thinking when they adopted this plan. Here is a comparison of what was back in 2010 and what is in 2022, and as part of the development itself. As you can see on the 2022 aerial, a lot of development has happened. And one thing to note in this is that a lot of the development has happened around the Progress Village area. That is significant around that Progress Village area. Lot of residential as well as non-residential growth. The Greater Palm River Community Plan has nine goals. Just to give you a context of the review that we did as part of looking at what we have done so far. There are nine goals, and these are the nine goals listed in priority, actually. And these goals have strategies behind them. There are 121 strategies behind these nine goals. Most of the strategies are started or are ongoing. For example, we have highlighted all this in your staff report as backup that we have provided to you. The implementation and ongoing and started projects include the projects you are well aware of, the stormwater projects, improvements in the Palm River area, ditch cleaning, et cetera, in the Palm River area. It's an example of an ongoing project. There are some projects that are yet to be implemented. An example of that is the community wanted to see an express bus from Palm River to downtown. As you know, Commissioners, because of the shortage in funding, we only have a limited single, local service that is from, that goes from all the way from Brandon through Palm River Community to downtown. That's the only thing that's available right now. So there are strategies similar to that that needs to be revisited as part of the update, and that will be helpful if the board chooses to do so. Some aspects of the community plan is also worth reviewing as part of the potential update. There are these strategies, broad strategies, and does not include anything at the neighborhood level. That is significant considering that there are communities like the Progress Village community that majority of changes has happened around that community but doesn't really have an identity established as part of the community plan itself. There is a good news in this, that we are acquiring the local water and wastewater system from City of Tampa that gives us a lot of control over how we improve the community infrastructure in Palm River area. So those are some of the things that we would like to look at as part of the community plan update if the board chooses to do so. So with that, I will give my mic to Jay Collins, who will go through the next steps. If the board chooses to instruct us to update the community plan, what is the process? How long does it take? So Jay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Good afternoon. Jay Collins with the Planning Commission staff. The rather busy graphic that you have on your screens right there is actually from the community planning guide. That is an adopted guide. You can find that on planhillsborough.org, and that is a staff guide in how it is that staff either initiate and actually create a community plan with a community or update a community plan. So we have just completed an update in Wyomama of a community plan, but previously, we also did updates in the university area as well as Lutz. So this is something that the county has undertaken before, and I'm sure that they will undertake in the future. Again, the reason to bring this up is only to show that it's basically a recipe for success. This is something that we have done in the past and something that we can do in the future, and it shows basically what that outcome would be. Oh, next slide, please. And with that, ourselves, as well as community and infrastructure planning, we're already starting to have some conversations between the two departments to go, if the board says yes, go out and actually update this plan, can we do it in our work programs right now? And we are happy to say that we do believe that we can actually start working with the community on an update of their community plan as soon as fall of this year in the coming months. It is about a two-year process, so obviously, if the board instructs us to go out there and do it, it's not something that happens overnight. It's something that is incremental and takes a little bit of time, but we would be back in front of the board at the board's discretion to provide updates when they would like to hear those updates. So with that, I believe this concludes mine and Mr. Patrick's presentation, and we are available for any comments, questions, or concerns you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'll open that up for questions. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we all can see, that the Greater Palm River Plan does need to be updated, you know, from 2008, and all of the growth has occurred in the Progress Village area. But I would like to see that we change it to the Greater Palm River and Progress Village Plan. And then I move that we accept the report from staff and give them the direction to update the plan and present back to us when it's completed.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith. I too agree, but I wanted to ask a question of Jay in just a moment, but Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. Thank you for bringing this back. I like that idea of combining the two. It seems like they kind of have synergy and proximity, so those are good things. And I've been concerned about this because I've seen a few things come by us at our various land use meetings that totally disregarded the previous plan in terms of actually even what we approved to put down, which they were opportunities for neighborhood commercial and mixed use that got turned into more industrial, which is, you know, from what I could see or glean, it didn't seem like a good idea for building that community. And I'll say this, more and more and more, what I see is our big, what we need to, and we can't seem to get it achieved, I'm not sure how we bring it to happen, but what we're not successful at doing is somehow getting the private sector of developers to do any sort of mixed use, town centers, placemaking, trip capture, all those things that I think could be, there's still opportunity to do that in Progress Village and in Palm River. And I have gotten frustrated over the time I've been here because that just, over and over and over and over again, doesn't really occur anywhere, and we keep trying to put things in to make that happen. And I know that back when I was an aid to Catticaster in 2003 to 2006, we did a lot of trying to do that in Town and Country, and the idea was you have to wait decades for sometimes these things to generate. And it's been a decade and a half, and it's been a little bit there, but I'm just, I'll just, I don't know, it may be a challenge that is, that somehow we can't figure out, but I'll just throw that out there as being significant in us trying to figure out if there's a way that we can possibly do this. I know we look a lot at affordable housing, and that's really good, to have that, obviously, but what we have, I mean, I just see near zero of trip capture, of neighborhood commercial, of town center, of that. So I'll just, I'll put that out there in terms of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized. Thank you. And I'll, I know, just remind everybody, I know we've talked about this before, but one of the keys to what, one of the main keys to what you're talking about in creating and growing an economic--
and growing an economic town center there is the conversion of the septic to sewer that is really hamstrings business development in these communities. Recently, fairly recently, in Gibsonton, a property came for sale right in the town center on the Main Street, Highway 41 there, and several businesses looked at it and couldn't develop anything other than more mini warehouses and storage facilities because it doesn't have a modern forest main sewer. So, you know, I really think as we go along with that conversion of septic to sewer, we'll be able to have more businesses that are currently simply unable to locate there.
And I'd like to add that, you know, when we were looking in the report, there was a, the grid showed where we were in the process of adopting the previous plan as it stood, the community plan. Seventy-five of those, of 75 points of those plans are actually being implemented or ongoing. There was one under planning and growth that cannot be implemented, and I was looking through the notes, and I couldn't identify what is it that we can't do? And is it related to the septic to sewer issue? And the reason I ask that question is that, you know, the Sodowsky Trust was swept two years ago, or a year and a half ago, where half of the money was pulled away from what is collected that by trust was to go towards affordable housing or housing development. 25% of that was to go to support housing and development through the use of investment in our septic to sewer conversion process. So if, in fact, part of the challenges we're experiencing in a community such as this that is being impacted by the lack of the ability to provide septic to sewer systems and services, I'm going to actually ask our staff to continually explore opportunities to bring those dollars back to Hillsborough County, given that last year, we sent up $315 million in doc stamps and got a total of $14 million back this projected this year. So if some of that is septic to sewer money, I want to go get that, too, because it does hold these types of communities where the infrastructure was built on the septic to sewer systems that do impact the opportunities for the community and limit the type of growth that could occur, as you alluded to, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Kemp. So I am looking forward to seeing this be updated, be updated and explored in terms of planning and how we utilize those funds that we send to Tallahassee, that we can bring back for investment in our community and to address those issues. But can Jay, you can elaborate to the one that's marked as cannot, that's under planning and growth?
So- Yeah, Mr. Patrick actually would be better at answering that question since his department actually worked on that report.
I'm unable to hear him. Could you repeat that? We're unable to hear you very well, Jay.
I was only saying that Mr. Patrick should probably answer that question since his department authored the report.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much. John Patrick?
So Commissioner, that's a good question, Commissioner. I should have touched that in my presentation. There is one strategy that cannot be implemented. That's correct. It is actually described in page 14 of your backup. The plan was, the community asked to designate the Tower Dairy property, which is actually at the southwest corner of 78th Street and 36th Avenue, along 78th Street. That was to be designated as a business park. Unfortunately, the property had a PD zoning prior to the community plan adoption, and the property owner actually decided to proceed with the PD as it was, and the property is currently developed as a subdivision. So that is not viable, that is not possible to implement that strategy anymore. But there are other areas in the community plan that has been identified as neighborhood or commercial centers that may be viable candidates for office development. So this update, if the Commissioners choose so, then will give us an opportunity to look at those and look at for other opportunities along with water and wastewater system and look at economic development in that area.
So I'm going to ask a process question. As this community plan be reconsidered and updated, as this board takes a look at what ultimately would be adopted by the Planning Commission and the community for that, as you alluded to, there was a PD that precluded being able to adopt what was described or goal, as a goal in the community plan. And now we do have, and I'm not going to remember the right number, but the Hillsborough County or county governments have the ability to update the comp plan and the zoning of a particular piece of property that could sync up that opportunity to make sure that that is an option. And so I'm curious to learn in the future what's possible in terms of making those changes when a community plan is adopted, and what our process would be for making that happen, because that would actually update or change entitlements possibly through the comp plan and the zoning process once the community plan is adopted. And so that's why I want to see if staff can take a look at that option and see where we would apply that ability to have the county update the comp plan and the zoning in order to get what we need. So thank you. So with that, do we have a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
And to make the appropriate recommendation? Yes. Okay. I think we have that motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second, by Commissioner Myers, and a second by Commissioner Smith. Please take a roll call vote.
Chair Overman?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Our next item are future discussion items, but I did want you to just read a quick statement because there was a message that went out to Davis Island. The Port Tampa Bay is holding an emergency exercise today, and it seems that a test emergency alert message was inadvertently sent to Davis Island and Harbor Island residents regarding sheltering in place for hazmat. It is only an exercise, and we're all working to mitigate the issue, and new messaging advising of the test has been sent to residents. This information is being provided to your offices, too, in case you get any questions. So if you receive any messages or if any of our residents receive this message, it is only a test, and they can ignore it.
Can they also notify the press in order to get it on, like, you know, the television so that people are watching potentially could get notified? Because a lot of people are not necessarily online. Okay, we got it?
Got it. They're on it.
All good? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, because I know not everybody's online or has a phone somewhere that they're paying attention to.
This is only a test. Yes. All right.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, and the public can hear that as well. Future discussion items are final item.
Okay. Any future discussion items, Board? We're all talked out, huh? Excellent. I'm sure we will have some in the near future, but for today, hearing none, I will call, thank you all, and call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.